Now I could distribute these notes for you all at home or something by email if you like.
Email.
You can do that too. Then you can, we can send them by email.
Well, I've already, I've already sent my stuff in by email there.
Okay.
All this mail, this, this is just some notes about some ideas, like our rules of the road, which I think we gotta spend time on and, uh, and, uh, okay. And also just to be up to date and on to do that tonight.
Okay.
So, can I say, can I say, guys, a rapid minutes from the?
Yes, I did. I'm so bad.
Oh, that's the, that's the, that's the regular meeting, right?
Oh, yeah.
Not the special meeting.
I did it with a regular meeting.
Okay. So, our next meeting is March twenty first at six P M. We're not gonna change that.
Yeah.
Okay, and we do recognize that twenty seventy-two is going to be a huge issue and we need to, um, have all of our work on this done in the next less than five months. So, we're gonna have to start looking at more, suggest, do you like to see a draft? What are you thinking about? You're talking for that?
Well, I just, you know, we're talking about scheduling the meetings right now and I think, I think we do need to schedule some meetings and I think probably we need to make sure that we're addressing it very quickly.
Yeah.
And I'm talking about, you know, I think we need to look at, at two things. One, either weekly or every other week meetings. Two, to try and whittle the things down and then try and get a sense. I'd like to have a meeting in two weeks, uh, and determine then within the group if we think that we should have a steering committee collectively think we should have a steering committee panelists so that we can focus on all the other things as well. And, and I'm not talking about sort of taking a close-off approach or saying, no, we're not gonna be, I firmly suggest that a couple of those should be involved in steering committee. But that we just focus on, on what needs to be done. Um, and, and, you know, we've got, there's, there's a large list of items here that we're facing in this year that we want to look at.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I think we need to, we need to put a little giddy out, uh, a sense of urgency, not a sense of trying to ram anything through, but a sense of urgency because I don't think there's enough drive to get this thing done in the period of time. I think we've got a lot of people coming and talking about a lot of things. We've got a lot of people that are going all over the maps, uh, including some of ourselves and I'll include myself in that to, to try and achieve something. But, you know, we're not focused on getting something done. And that's why I have a better focus and looking at what really we can do and looking at things that may be secondary that we could look at next year that do not have the same sense of urgency. So, getting a group to give us a prioritized, the urgency, what needs to be done this year, how we put that forth, how it dovetails into the, the vision statement that is in the sub-area plan. I've already received a commitment from Mark Porzonius. He said that he was very, very interested in, uh, updating all of the insignificant data that's in the sub-area plan because it is insignificant and outdated and...
And they update that on their own?
They will do that at our request and I think we...
Oh, you just have a request.
We need to include that in our submission about twenty seventy-two that we want them to update the data in the sub-area plan. And so that way they can prepare it in their budget to make sure next year we can do all of that.
Okay, so I'll go back up to when you started this with, uh, how does everybody else feel about an additional steering meeting, which might send me to the issue?
Just for the time being.
Yeah. Me personally, I don't see, it doesn't work for me now unless we start having a discussion. I, I think it's adding one more layer of babysitting. I'm just using very casual words, not to suggest that those people who would be so, uh, ambitious and committed to this community, to all terms such, uh, a committee needs to be babysitting, but for quickness, I think it adds another layer of work for us. I think we are the steering committee.
Well, then I need to make sure that we, we have a commitment from everybody here that we're gonna have a lot of use.
Right.
That was cool.
I, I had that.
I think that's your expectation. I think I like you heard. Hey, I wanna say something you didn't say, maybe you said to me personally. July thirty-first. I'd like to see it.
Oh, you like, shrink it?
Have a real draft, however it comes, from wherever it comes from.
So that we go one more whole month to?
Exactly.
To go from a draft and maybe even go out to the public pool more, a little bit here? Who knows, but have that month and then do that follow-up. And then be done with the fruit of strong at that point.
And, and just, just to, just to supplement that, if we do that, we should set it up so that we have a town hall meeting on July thirty-first at their house within, within a week prior to or after, so that we can explain everything to everybody. There's, everything has completely been opened up. It's been a completely open process. There hasn't been any, you know, and a wire come. So, we need to have that town hall so that people have an opportunity to hear and, uh, it's their last sort of pick of the cap.
Okay, well, why don't we start with, um, bi-weekly meetings, just scheduling them now and then we can start working on, um...
Sort of single day a week, but we'll just keep working.
Well, we have to put at least a couple of them on a Saturday for visiting crews. Um, now, you know, we all have our town schedules, so today's the nineteenth, two weeks before April second, if Tuesday is still a good night. And, um, can you look up our support schedule as well while you're here? Because we need to know if the building's available or potentially these meetings could be well attended.
I cannot be able to second myself, but, um, well, well, but, uh, not to, not to, not to miss lots of those, but, I mean, they unfortunately couldn't make it. I'm more, I can't.
Yeah.
I'm just trying out those.
I, I need that.
Maybe not secretary, if somebody could, if you do that.
And then...
My, my nice one, though. So, it could be that, but I'm not gonna be there.
So, two, three, four, are you going that way?
No, no, I just have a meeting in town.
Okay, so two, three, four, that's the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of that week. So that would be, you know, approximately two weeks now.
We're down to Tuesday?
Tuesday is the second, the Thursday, Wednesday, the fourth is the Thursday night.
I could do, I could do the third.
When are the voters' meetings? Are the second Thursday or the?
First Thursday.
First, fourth. So, the fourth isn't good for that because we don't wanna pummel against the voters' meetings.
And I think if I remember correctly, there's been a pilot calculation, uh, Jack is here.
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
On the fourth.
So, two more, three, the Tuesday and the Wednesday would be good.
I think the Wednesday is good.
One.
Okay, so two is working good for everybody, but Steven?
Yeah.
Okay, so April two at six P M here.
As far as I can tell, oh, see, well, what, where, it's a chamber conference meeting here. So, according to this, uh...
Oh, okay, so let's back on there. I mean, we're just trying to shoot for a, a approximate date to meet.
Well, the first, what's the first?
The first is a Monday.
I have a big keeper thing that I can miss that. Oh, it's a, I might have already, it's a, it's a, it's a...
No.
I saw the big keeper got a lot. He was here.
We're already on the counter for the first one.
You are?
Oh, no, we are, A R C.
Oh. Yeah, they almost do, me too, to have, or do the radio come or something?
Yeah. We're gonna be able to, so, I'm not sure we were, so, yeah, this, this room appears to be they have long first, if you want to...
I agree with the first. Monday's the first, can you do the first?
I can't.
No, Mondays and Wednesdays are tough. Okay, but you can.
I could do the first, yeah.
And dated? And so the chamber conference is like?
Which, which one is there?
For Monday, April first.
April Fool's Day.
Okay.
I don't know, is that gonna be the hand, is the hand?
Yes, it is the hand, it is the, well, we are A R C, it's not the, it's not the...
I, I have the hand on half too. Well, that starts at seven, this will probably start at six, so it'd be two, both.
Two year one.
Here, I'm sorry. So, Monday, April first.
Yeah.
First, the sixth.
At six, that's the deal.
Yeah.
Okay, we can come back to these later and figure out. So then, two weeks from around that period of time is the week of the fifteenth. Mondays and Wednesdays are no good for you to test out our methods, which is driving to Tuesday the sixteenth, okay?
Building out.
Okay. Tuesday, April sixteenth. Six.
Uh, can I have a Saturday draft?
Yeah, so the fourth.
May the fourth be with you?
May the fourth be with you.
Four, there's a seven, I'm worried.
So, one, two, yes, so, may the fourth, perfect.
What about, do you wanna do that?
Do you have woodwork eleven?
Yeah, normally, so. But I did.
Want to take it down that?
Saturday, may the fourth.
Saturday.
And Saturday market is gonna start, uh, on May fourth. So, we've been told by Ben, anytime after two P M will be preferred.
Oh.
Can you, you have to act to me like, um, three, four? Yeah? Three, give the, give the, give the market people time to clean up and move? Just three o'clock, right? And forth at three P M. So, the next, right?
Sorry, April, April.
April, yes.
The eighteenth. Eighteenth, right? I'm just slide that in there, right? So, that gives you two meetings in the same week?
Yeah, the Tuesday, same as this week.
Yeah.
This is the month of August.
Like, do we know, are we intending essentially for the regular meeting not to spend too much time on issue?
I think that's...
No, we're not gonna focus the, the regular meeting on all the plot of it.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
What's the next date for the regular meeting?
Is the April eighteenth.
April eighteenth, and then sixteenth.
And then, so, may the fourth and then two weeks after that is may the sixteenth for a regular meeting. Sixteenth. Regular meeting.
Yeah.
And then, so, the next, um...
And so the fourth was, was a?
Was the special meeting, and the sixteenth, and then we could either...
Early, about the fourteenth, if we put two meetings in one week, or just push it off?
I think push it off.
Uh, that's a very, uh, maybe free.
Or the, or we could do another Saturday in there, do Saturday, the eighteenth.
That's Canadian on weekend, or do that?
Yeah, I know, I know, you're absolutely right.
The twenty-fifth is the U S May on weekend.
That allows Canadians, that allows Canadians to go out there.
Well, that's true, I don't like it.
I just know the majority of my people that come around on the first Canadian on weekend, the last thing they're gonna do is go to a meeting.
Fair enough.
They wanna be playing on their property and going to the eighteen.
No, that's a good point. And then the twenty-fifth is the American.
Yeah.
So, we would have, since our, our regular meeting come on Thursday, the sixteenth, we can pick any day of the week in the next week and only have one meeting that following week. So we could do Tuesday, the twenty-first.
I'll leave it all, like, I'm, I'm out of country, actually.
Mm-hmm.
On the twenty-first until the fourth. So, I'm hoping this, or, possibly anything, uh, do I have the twenty-first?
Um, I'm good on the twenty-first.
That's the side.
The first is, if you got a six.
Tuesday. Mm-hmm. So, it's one, two, three, four, that's the worst change so far, I mean... Okay, and then, um...
If you realize we don't have a year for a long, you can always get rid of it.
I don't have that in the case.
If we really find ourselves a topic.
So, if July thirty-first is the goal for the draft, are we gonna establish a date for all the other groups to submit their, um, all their feedback? Like, as the voters, we're gonna put together some sort of draft to, um, to this group? Is there a date, date you wanna establish, a deadline?
Or the January first, or, and what, what?
Well, no, I think, I think we need to be ahead of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, something, yeah.
I just assume it would be a, a living document in that each special meeting, each group would bring, oh, and our group talked about it again this month meeting and we feel that, you know, there's one more change we'd like to add and so on. Make it living, make it something that comes, unless your groups don't wanna spend that much time talking about twenty seventy-two at every meeting.
Well, we, actually, the voters were trying to put an educational program together, which is how something would come with, um, what would the twenty seventy-two look like? The standard, um, all twenty twenty, most twenty sixty. But, um, and that's still in progress and what, how that's gonna look. But we wanted some sort of timeline with this group that we could submit our feedback.
How about by the end of June? Of one month ahead of when we want to have our draft done. We want all organizations to have it.
But if, but the vision you were describing of being, being discussed more, more concretely, you want it much earlier.
I promise, I'm giving you a vision that it's gonna take with that program.
That's what we were trying to figure out. Because our timeline, I mean, of course, it's a walk to do, there's a lot of time to do. And that's what our concern was, that's why we were trying to figure out the, you guys are good.
And this is one of the reasons why I think we need to narrow our focus.
Right.
Instead of taking the entire document, let's take the ones that are, that are credible, then.
Right.
It's certainly up to the group, but I just think that...
And our, those two items that, um, he highlighted on the next, confusing our voters.
Yeah.
Oh, that was, yeah, that was it, yes, correct.
And I just, all I did was go through the list and look at the things that were not contentious. And these are the, these are the five items that have some contention in them that I think are gonna be issues. I don't think the other ones are gonna be issues, but, you know, that's yet to be determined. But if we focus on these ones...
The master of the voters.
Or start by focusing on them.
Start by focusing, and if something comes up out of the woodwork on the other side, then I have no problem and we may have to reship the focus at some point. But if we, if we can keep the catalog being narrow, that's why I'm saying if you take a color switch, because if we deal with these this year, put them forth with the request that they update all the information in the sub-area plan. Then they got it in place. He already knew we were gonna do this, so he put us on the docket that he presented to Walker County Council, last week, two weeks ago.
Okay.
So, it's a docket that says that we're working on the sub-area plan and there's gonna be some changes, uh, because they've gotta prepare for the planning commission meeting, they've gotta prepare to put it in front of county council, you know, they've gotta go through all those processes. So, uh, if we can, if we can do this, you know, I think the other thing too is, where do we wanna include Cliff Strong in here?
Right, well, and, uh, in my mind, I would like at least one of these special meetings to essentially be just us changing the verbiage, not public input meeting. Now, of course, we have to still have public comment, but we're, we're, it's not, we're working on saying, why don't we change this line to, you know, the player vanilla will be available at five P M?
Yeah.
And then have subject audience go, well, we think it should be four P M.
Well, that's gotta stop. Uh, we, we gotta get the work done here.
Yeah.
We keep getting any...
So, I'd like one meeting that's like that. And we think that'd be a good valuable meeting for Cliff Strong to come to.
I, I think it's, I think that somehow we just start getting some drafts to Cliff and, and David, I talked about this a little too, again, early on, well, early on, not this month, but, you know, it's well towards lighter versus possible. Because really, he's gonna look at what we're trying to do versus to go.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, I'm, I'm sure Allison and us are already focused at the actual verbiage in the code. That's okay, but also, uh, Cliff clearly understands from the document from us what are our ideas for at least a small amount of...
And how does he put it into the, in the, so, that he...
Okay, well, I was suggesting that we make up the code. I was thinking, when do we bring Cliff Strong? And then when do we have, uh, one of our special meetings? It's, well, it's just about, um, implementing the suggestions he's given us into, into the verbiage.
Deliver a document, become first, and then bring in companies. Don't have to see the document first time in the meeting. Even we can come to the meeting to discuss the...
I agree with you.
Yeah, that's really smart.
So, I think we narrow our focus, we make the changes in, in, in those areas where, where we feel and everybody else feels that we should be making the changes based on the actual we're assuming. We draft something, basically saying these, these items, we can do a gathering. These are our thoughts, we send them to him, we ask him to come to our next meeting and then he can talk about them. And he can, he can inform us, advise us, tell us exactly what is going on, what needs to be referred to.
So, we need at least two of our meetings before we even have...
That's pretty pragmatic, but it does underline the issue of getting input from the community on issues. I mean, for example, the candidates, again, it's tied about the lack of replacing part, uh, uh, February. Yeah, they could, uh, which is, they could be a lot, like, and add this issue.
Well...
There's three of those, and we will, and, and we will not be wrestling that if we, if we take, and that's just one example, we don't know about, we don't know about the example, we don't even know a lot of examples. And, and yes, you're, I, I think, point two, if we tie that to what, I don't, sure, we don't, we don't wanna...
Can I ask you a bigger, Jeff, real quick? At the taxpayers' meeting the other night, a lady, I forget the catch your name, was sitting right here beside how you actually, she brought up Jeff telling her to dump truck and a couple of the concrete on his property. She asked them to intervene and write a letter, uh, on her behalf to Jeff and suggested that somebody get ahold of Jeff, a volunteer. He, uh, basically is doing what he's doing with his property and it's not the greatest eyesore of everything, you know, I've seen worse, but, uh, it, it's, people are still pushing to get rid of the, the heavy equipment. If there, if there's not proper zoning or something, I mean, there, we're gonna be in the same issue with more, uh, C D Rs or C I Rs, I guess, that are not called, uh, in the future.
I, I think the heavy equipment issue is one of the priorities.
It, it, I see that as one of the priorities.
I think we've already escalated that.
Is it?
Well, it's been brought up.
But what it is, is to let me know, if only know that, it's been brought up in a couple of years.
Well, not just that, well, that's how we started here, right?
We don't know about things that we, that we were gonna be listening from a clearly...
That's a zoning issue, actually, not twenty seventy-two issue. So, that's almost a different category.
It's a, it's a, and that property is...
It is a broader issue, it's something that has to be addressed, though. But it's not something that's gonna be addressed, you know, quickly. I don't think it's gonna be a tax amendment change. I think it's gonna be a little more in depth because actually, it does, there's only one area that is considered, uh, residential, industrial, commercial, or whatever they call it, which is right back here. And, and yes, that's something that we need then to know that we have to look at. We need something done about it because with a complete and total lack of that availability of property, nobody can comply with those regulations. So, it, it is essential, and I think it's something we have to look for, but I don't think it's something that's gonna be dealt with through twenty seventy-two and the tax amendment change.
Right, so it's one of the...
No, it's coming on, I mean, it's totally separate, yeah. But it could be put on the to-do list. It's a zoning that is...
And that comes back to the, the problem of trying to collect people's, uh, problems. You know, what are people trying to accomplish and the costs of life and lives? Makes things difficult, but it's a great promise if we can, if we can't go into this year and then we can deliver a lot more next year. So, we've gotta get our act together and pull all those ideas together anyway, regardless of being a focus.
Yeah.
So, we focus to deliver something, to actually achieve something this year, but we keep collecting and we keep trying to understand and keep discussing.
Okay, so...
I'll put the May from the first. About me?
Yeah, and then... Two weeks from then...
June the fourth.
I'm available for this.
How about Saturday, June first? Oh, you're going back on the fourth. How about six, Thursday, the sixth?
I think the first Thursday.
Okay, that's right, Thursday, right.
What about the, uh, June?
So, the first is...
I have a June eighth, or two, the first?
Uh, well, he's not back yet, so I think we should go all pushed up to the eighth, better, and do a three o'clock. Saturday, June eighth.
That would be again for the...
Three o'clock.
To the three o'clock. I might, we all need to schedule for that anyway. See how this holds up, I don't wanna try to go all the way, but I just...
Well, I think we wanna try and get the whole year of, of regular meetings at least scheduled so it can be published.
Yeah.
So, and then we can always add special meetings or cancel regular meetings if they come up against something else. I think we're trying to get the whole year scheduled and published.
June two, five.
So, the June twentieth is our next one.
That's Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
The eighth is for special meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if you're bothered with the summer, but, uh, I'm gonna take the day, the, 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 the fourth.
Oh, yeah, I know, it's gotta go further out than that, I think. We're doing the eighth and the twentieth.
Two to the twenty-third.
Uh, well, you could, but I have a couple of comments.
Uh, also, I'm, 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 I'm...
So, we could do...
I'll do anything for you. We got a special meeting Tuesday.
And that's three in June.
Did you confuse July the second with my Canadians? Cause they're staying over for the only head.
Right.
One?
Two, it's July second.
Cause a lot of them stay.
But that's the first Tuesday, that's chamber, so that's, we could do Monday, oh, not Canada Day, that's not gonna work. Um, so, no, I, I think that one is also right off unless we push it up to Saturday, the sixth.
Well, we have first to the eighteenth, well, I mean, two, eighteenth, fourteen.
Well, then that makes it three meetings that month.
We could, yeah, we could.
All right, all right.
That seems beyond our...
All right.
I see two in June, and we know...
My first, uh, three, the eighteenth and the twentieth is the regular meeting.
Eighteenth, like, eighth?
Eighteenth, eighteenth.
That's two meetings.
Yeah, and, 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 the regular meeting.
Oh, the regular.
You know, we, if, if we're successful in getting...
A lot of work done.
A lot of work done.
We can change these.
We may, we, we can change these, yeah, we have to.
Yeah.
Uh, and we can call perhaps for the, uh, town hall or public meeting a little bit further ahead.
Yeah, it's not right in June and July, or, or trying to get these things wrapped up, right, so...
It's amazing how fast our year turned into three months. Yeah, exactly.
That's so crazy. Okay, so then... So, well, the next, really, um, we're gonna be looking at the week of the July eighth. Tuesday, the ninth.
Tuesday, July ninth.
That was me, that was for me. Yeah.
Eighteenth would be on record for using that month. Calendar updated with July eighteenth.
So, the next is six P M, July eighteenth.
Yeah.
Right, right.
But then, yeah, right, so, one of the special. Well, now we're getting pretty close to the thirty-first, which is our, is our preferred actual thing to really, more or less have a really solid draft in place, but might still get picked on a little bit. The convention is pretty, pretty much done. We're already at the stage, we're probably talking about having a, like a town hall meeting, I believe in the twenty-second or something like that.
Yeah.
Something like that.
So, why don't we just leave it there?
Or the thirtieth.
Town hall.
Yeah.
And I'm suggesting the town hall probably should be on Saturday.
Yeah, that's fine.
Maybe it's Saturday.
Saturday.
And, you know, you don't have anything?
With still Saturday market.
Well, yeah, the, the...
They use whole building.
They use whole building.
Both it rains, they, they, they use the interior and otherwise they've got a little company that...
Maybe it's a little warm all time.
Yeah, so it's gonna be three o'clock, four?
It's town hall time.
Well, anybody come to the town hall at three o'clock, it's Saturday?
But we can, we can invite them.
If they wanna have a safety...
Yes, we'll show up.
And we can invite them to make their email comment, and, um, you know, that part's last meeting to be women, they couldn't make it, submitted their comments, which were rarely considered, so.
I know, but you know us.
Well, great, okay. Okay, so then from this point onward, we're just gonna do the third Thursday of every month for the regular meetings, right? For August fifteenth, September nineteenth. Okay, nineteen, September nineteenth is the Thursday. Seventeenth.
And, uh, for the thirty-first, December was.
November twenty-first for the November meeting.
What was, I'm sorry, what was October?
Uh, October was seventeenth.
Then December nineteenth.
Which I propose we just straight line. Okay. Okay, I think we have succeeded. Do, I think you wanna add about the calendar, it's all, all the weekly on our agenda today.
The only question that we had was when we needed to have our submission, because our plan was to do a couple of educationals and then have the voters come to a meeting, give us their input, so we can then put it into a document, do then make it to you. So we needed just the time to have a couple of sessions, so that we can make sure everybody's informed, and then a session of where we get their feedback, and then we can put it into a document, because otherwise, if we're not able to educate, nobody knows what you're talking about. And we don't then have a meeting to work, okay, we educated you, what are your feelings, what are your points, to then be able to put those in a document, we're not representing the people we're supposed to represent.
So did we, did the thirty-first as well? Now, it would be great if we had some draft of what you're working on.
Like your learning document.
Yeah, so that Cliffsong can, you know, make some, uh, input, like, this is going in the right direction, except for this part of it, which, or whatever he's got to say about it, would be great to.
Yeah, no, that's the other part, because we basically only, we didn't attack the entire document. We took six pieces.
Yeah, and that's, that's how we're gonna feel it too, right?
We took the ones that, uh, they, they spoke to them, those ones, and we took the ones that people were telling us most well, we took those six.
Yeah.
And that's what we're concentrating on. Some of the other ones, it's like, why worry about our bill of health? We have no point to attack it, that part of the document, it's a federal law. And your focus is concentrating.
Didn't they have President State, we were gonna go there before?
Go where?
Oh, they go, I see Cliff's wrong before, and just thinking about what you got.
You can say go there, because maybe we have.
I think we have a discussion.
Definitely have a discussion, and we even see if he would venture out to one of our meetings, why not? The more that he's, it sounded like he was willing to come and, and help us all, so, let's use him.
So it's a work in progress for voters, and then later, we can always Cliff, anybody who wants it.
Cliff, and, and the educational documents that are being put together by voters, that these ladies and, and, uh, the other two guys, uh, it's gonna be invaluable, seeing the, in black and white, what twenty sixty says for the whole county, what twenty seventy-two is extra for Point Roberts, and where do we come up with it? Still protecting Point Roberts, but, uh, education is key.
And so for an actual date then, the next meeting after June thirty, period, is July ninth, so you could be prepared to submit. That's, yeah, so voters is gonna submit. And have you for all of yours, with you.
Yeah, we have to, we have to, because we're shooting for the twenty-seventh for the town hall, that's, you know.
Right.
And when will we talk about that?
Well, it's a matter of determine that, and it's gonna depend on how far along we get.
Well, I'm thinking, I wonder if he'd come to a Saturday meeting, because that gives us two special meetings between now and then, and then the Saturday, May fourth will be a special meeting, but I'm not sure how thrilled he's gonna be about working on the meeting.
Yeah.
So we could ask him.
Well, let's make that her speaking.
Yeah, I guess, true. You know, and it, it's a lovely place to visit on a Saturday afternoon, you know, come for dinner or whatever. Um, so, David is our county liaison, do you wanna touch base with Cliff and get him these dates and see what his thoughts on which dates?
Oh, I'll, I'll concede, put his preferences for weekend or.
And then he might give you a better idea of when he can be more valuable to us, earlier in the game, or later in the game, or everything.
The only thing is the three o'clock on a Saturday meeting is gonna be probably more, uh, engaging with the community, because they're gonna have the opportunity to be here and, and express, and I'm just wondering if that's the time to have Cliff there, or whether that's enough to take input and have Cliff go to the next one, so we can.
Which is May twenty-first, I was just worried about sticking it so far away from now.
But by then, we should have a significant amount of information together.
And that's what he wanted us to, well, well, that really, it's giving something substantive that you want.
Have something that, that is be able to process.
Well.
If Cliff's information could be passed on a test of, then we could reach out to him, but hopefully getting him up here to one of our
Voters.
Voter meetings before that, so they, anybody that wants to be engaged can, can get there, and then, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let's get to the regular meetings, and see what we're gonna tackle with that.
Okay, so.
No more talk about twenty seventeen today.
Okay. So, um, of all the list of things that are on here. Oh, gosh, oh, gosh, hard to prioritize it, isn't it?
Can I throw something out?
Yeah.
I'm gonna throw out the White House.
Like, throw it out, like?
No, no, throw it out as, as, as an issue that, that needs attention. Uh, as you read from my comments about that last meeting with, uh, Rod Lanter, I, I was really quite impressed that he did get jumped, and he was treated with respect and asked very good questions, um, and thoughtful questions about what was going on, and provided some good information. But, in saying that, I know that the, uh, the voters or sort of the taxpayers, uh, have a long bit of the opinion that White House Park is systematically being disassembled, and I feel the same way in the Chamber of Business City. Part of the Chamber's responsibilities involves towards it, and White House Park has long been a big drop towards Point Roberts. Uh, the fact that they're putting kids' playground back in there is great, I think that's gonna happen in May. My biggest concern is that their, those stocks aren't a big type of mustard. And they're not, they're not.
I do information on that. Maybe going to schedule, it's obviously something to schedule anyway, but, go ahead, finish off.
Here's, here's where I think we should go with it and look at, is, is the fact that their, and there's no money to do with yield and, you know, White House Park, um, everything's based on budget, budget, budget. But, and this is where it kinda gets interesting, we have this slipper tax, that the county is benefiting from, parcels being delivered here, shipped out of here, and they're not giving us anything for that, because they don't think we know about it, and there's no lead for us to know exactly how much it is. But wouldn't it be great if we could leverage the, our knowledge of that slipper tax, uh, to have White House Park receive a little more attention, uh, to receive it from the county, uh, so that we can at least start to get them to rebuild some of the things uh, that have been there for years, that now have basically disassembled and taken away because they're drawn over to the fall park.
Okay, so there's lots of suggestions that we want all money of White House Park Trump continuation, so either one that should be on our next meeting in two days. It should be on the agenda. White House Park.
And I can wait till after the meeting, but I have something to say, new information in the county on that.
Okay.
We're discussing the which agenda.
Yeah, just which agenda.
Yeah, so White House definitely won.
Um, so.
No, are we just trying to do a, in, in series?
Yeah, why not, why not meetings?
Okay, next, White House Park.
Also, also, I think that may, we have to bring out T V D funds, I think that's gonna end up, because we've already voted that some T V D funds could be used for that White House Trump continuation project.
Yeah, we're seeing that's the scene, so.
Yeah, so the regular meeting will have new business, ultimately, we'll have our, we'll do two or three unique topics per. Now, um, another simple one really is the traffic, um, mitigation. Because we've already done much of the work on that, we've already had, uh, a traffic analysis done by public boards, we've already had, um, uh, five or four presentations, this will cost this much, this will cost this much, we just need, really need to decide how much we need, and if any, one of those options is good for us. So we should probably find that document through Joel Pass.
And the chairman gave a good presentation about that, with, he just said, you're right, the next thing we need to do is to decide, or decide, are we gonna do part of lighting for the, the, the trade-off, what else are we gonna spend money on, and are we gonna move that?
I, I think we have to get some consensus on, on something in respect of this, uh, to the traffic mitigation, because unless we do and get it on their agenda, and we're looking at whatever we do at a meeting where we discuss that, we're not talking about that happening this year or next year.
No.
Or maybe not the following year.
So.
Unless there's simple items, but we need to impress upon the county that we want some attention in certain areas, and we need to get all their capital funds for the fall.
I think that we can manage that being added to this week's meeting as well. So that's already plenty, because we're gonna have public comment and, you know, other catching up to do.
Should we invite some from public?
I think we should review what we've done to date, get the, get the presentation that, um, Joe Ratan and those put together for us already.
Get the paperwork and review.
And then we can, the new work, and what we're looking at, and decide for the future what's, what we're gonna pursue.
Yeah.
Okay, so our next regular meeting after that, is Thursday, April eighteen.
Did you, this, other, this, this, April eighteen?
No, no, we have those three items on March twenty-first. White House Park, TV, and traffic mitigation are gonna be main topics on March twenty-first, yeah.
Twenty-first, it's Thursday, yeah.
So two days now. So the next regular meeting, April eighteen.
Okay, yeah.
You're going to. So. Um, and it's gonna be and it's gonna be two days after a special meeting on twenty seventy-two, do you think that might be an appropriate one to talk about zoning amendments? Uh, the zoning amendments that are not about to be joined in the new.
Sure. Do whatever.
What you can add is.
Uh, in waiting.
So, Gray will be in that place. And then, um, almost these giant topics, I got all my list, um.
Well, you know, the funny thing is that this, the White House Park TV funds and the, uh, and traffic mitigation also falls into Maple Beach flooding mitigation, because that all falls on Joe Ratan, and it falls on the roads and public works.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and I'm just wondering, we should maybe separate, because those are big items, take two or two.
Okay.
And, you know, maybe we.
Move traffic mitigation to the eighteenth.
And, you know, and also.
And then you put the.
Maple Beach flooding.
Traffic.
And that's the date that I think Armin wants to, after talking about, right, other trees, right?
She's already done that.
Yeah? No, she hasn't done that.
Oh, eighteenth?
Yeah, eighteenth, sorry, eighteenth.
She was here.
No, she is, she wants to give another presentation.
On Thursday the eighteenth.
That's what she says in her emails, so, um, she didn't, since we're in, I, she's pretty efficient. I mean, it's just a presentation, I don't think it will work for our each conversation. So what do we have on the other?
Zoning amendments, traffic mitigation. That's a lot, but it's, I mean, I'm almost thinking we should ask her to come on the May sixteenth.
Awesome.
Okay, so let's talk about the APA candidacy restoration on May sixteenth.
And I think we'll do a little bit of homework ahead, in kind of particular with respect to Maple Beach mitigation and, and traffic, so, I'm, I'm very attracted is, uh, I'll, I'll hit all the children, and I'll see if I can get some, some, uh, information towards to them, because he's referred to in their presentation of the mitigation from Maple Beach.
Yeah, and, and he prepared things for per cap on the traffic circles and stuff like.
I think I'll, I'll get back to him and just have him put something together, of course, inviting, so that we have an idea of where it is.
Thank you very much. Okay, so another big project we have is, what do you think about the economic development plans, or anything we can really do other than reaching out to those other organizations like Port Bell and them?
Well, I, I got, you know, a situation where, um, the, uh, Don Goldberg, uh, I've been in contact with, with quite a bit, and he's, I think with, with the county exec retiring at the end of this year, or at the end of this year.
All right, at the end of this year.
No, maybe it's next year. Twenty twenty, I guess, twenty twenty.
Chuckles returning next year.
At the end of twenty twenty.
Yeah.
They, they seem to be taking a bit of a different approach towards things, um, and he's offered to come up and, and talk, and Point Roberts, and talk about economic development, and how the court can play a role in. So, I can ask if he would like to kind of talk about that on, on these given days, not, maybe for the evenings, he is planning to come up and do a presentation or a luncheon, uh, which is not been scheduled yet, but, uh, I'll ask him if he can come up on Thursday.
Would you know if he's presenting on that luncheon?
It would be on economic development, not the Port Bell.
I am really happy to just go to that meeting. And then you can schedule our economic development con- conversations after that, after we've heard what we have to say, um, so we need to know when that is gonna be scheduled.
I'll, I'll know more after the, uh, chamber meeting, the.
Would you send, for the Donan meeting, it's probably May, right, send us that, just we can put that on the calendar?
Oh, absolutely, so as soon as I got the date confirmed, I'll, and it'll be here, it'll be a luncheon here, so.
Oh, okay.
It'll, it'll, obviously you won't be on a Wednesday or a Friday, because we don't wanna interrupt the senior functions, so it'll be Tuesday or Thursday, one week, and fit it into the schedule.
Okay. So, so for the sixteenth, all we have is our meeting, what else were we gonna pull up the sixteenth?
Um, well, here's something that we haven't really looked at since, uh, Keith was a member, is the bylaws of this organization.
Oh, yes, and he's given me all the materials, so, I might have had a chance to look at it, but I would rather not, we're just gonna set it off each other.
Mm-hmm.
Probably for, for May maybe?
Uh, well, we've got APA candidacy restoration on May sixteenth, so we can do bylaws there.
We can have this all started on, it'll be this, uh, you know, you've gotta make sure that they're, where was it left?
You were on that.
Yeah, it, it was, it was.
It was like ninety-nine percent.
It's probably ninety percent done. We, we added and changed it, and then I don't think we saw an actual text amendment, you know, text, um, where we were standing, with a bunch of scribbles and arrows.
He's giving the laws, but.
I think I have, I have a printed copy, and I believe I have a digital copy as well, so.
Okay, forwarded, and, and then, but by, like, you don't even need it until.
If, if I can find out on how fourteen.
I'm sure I can find mine.
By the way, as we know, all the committees that are official committees in this county, I think we might be one, but I'll say maybe there's a few others that don't have bylaws, so it's good.
I don't think it were ever directed to.
No.
Produce bylaws, it was Keith's idea.
This is the right thing to do, and I'm just saying, I did research on, on the committees and looked into, maybe all of them, maybe more, because I've, about a hundred and something committees, or five.
Okay, um, so in terms of other things on your list, we've got like slipper tax, but isn't the taxpayer really taking the lead on that one? Shouldn't they?
They may ask a difficulty, but I think we should use what they've brought on the table and, and, you know, support them by, by stepping up.
And making a formal request to the county that, where, you know, if the slipper tax doesn't exist because we don't collect it, we're of clear mind that you have collected that tax, and we'd like to leverage that goodwill to parks, walking county parks, or some other needs that we have here.
And the other thing that I think we have to do with the T V D funds is find out very quickly how we can get those funds invested, our.
Right, so that was something, and so, so that's on our T V D fund, so we'll just, we'll, we'll present that motion or.
But that was put forward by the taxpayers as well, so I think.
Okay, that is a good point, that's.
And then nobody dispelled the notion that it was, there was a fifteen percent overhead, we don't think it exists.
I, no, I think that's, that's, I think that's a rumor, we'll find out for sure.
Well, I have to share with the same. We would, we would.
No, 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 I mean, they have an obligation to maintain those funds on behalf of, of the taxing district.
Yeah.
Oh, not from this committee?
This, there, there, there are no, uh, there are no, uh, title documents in R C Ws for T V D funds, it's just, it's something that the county's maintaining, and it's, you know, it's being managed by, uh, county council.
The document actually does say that a fee if any, but doesn't say if there is or how much if there is, we should fire it. I found the county document.
Fee of any.
It says a fee if any, to be determined to maintain.
Well, I think the reason I'm in charge of fees, is because they've been taking interest out of them, and stopping them while in lieu of a fee.
Right, uh, I know, I, it's been so low, I think I've pretty much, so. It's a million bucks. Three hundred and fifty, we don't have a second percent. Yeah, seven.
Just ask for the interest, go.
That's right.
Yeah, so we're going to, you know, we, June, so I think in the June regular meeting, we should get back to walking county parks.
And Lily Point.
So Lily Point, and, uh, and the whole, that, um, washed out trail, and which I know they've made a loop now, they're not gonna do anything, but all, all things walking county parks. Um, and then we should also be following up again with our, you know, all of these things we talked about earlier will become old business on the next meetings, so we're gonna likely be more following up, but.
Well, the, the values here, but, uh, we have, I think we did make a feature on here, right? So county parks, that's all the other.
Yes, but like I say, well, in the old business, we were gonna be following up with Maple Beach mitigation, we're gonna be following up with uh, all these other things that we. Yes, but like I say, well, in the old business, we were gonna be following up with Maple Beach mitigation, we're gonna be following up with, uh, all these other things that we start, we talk about, and then, you know, go away, do our little tasks and come back and report what we've learned or found, or, so I think June twentieth, if we just leave all things walking county parks and old business, um, that agenda's gonna fill up very significantly.
And we, once we know when, when, is it Dan Overeem, you said, or Doc? Once we know when he's speaking, we may have a discussion about that, so I can follow up, even though I don't know when that is yet, so we can't believe. So read what's left on your.
Now we can, if we, we start talking about all these things, then we can say, all right, let's table this issue to the June meeting or to the August meeting, and then we can start creating agendas for the second half of the year by surviving a meeting.
It's really good to get this outing to the public anyway, people bother to read it, and they'll say, oh, wow.
That's the meeting I'm still going to, yeah, like the Maple Beach guy that was here, now he knows he should really doesn't need to come on Thursday, so we should try and reach out to that guy.
I think, you know, we should also try and encourage people outside of the old twenty seventy-two, which should, to send their comments in for things that they think that we should be talking about and addressing.
I'll mention that.
Because, you know, what, we don't necessarily think they're, so if there's other ideas, or there's other items, we should encourage them to, uh, do that.
Okay. Plus, anytime there's, uh, any kind of debuilding permit, it's gonna be instantly put on our agenda, we're gonna have a warning, and in some cases, um,
Presentations.
We need, and we need a special meeting oftentimes, because they're, you know, our hearing is in four days, but we've just had our meeting, so we're not gonna wait a whole month for the guy. Um, so those will happen all year long potentially, just for the usual per cap review and recommendation to the public.
Quick question about that, should the county be wasting people's time, like, if it's, if it's public performance of their property, uh, should per cap be even taking the time to look at it, or?
I think the design guidelines of the, that have been moved into twenty seventy-two say that per cap will, but I don't think it's on there as a natural issue. I think it's just, I think it's just commercial, so it's, yeah, so I'm not sure that it's such a big waste of time, and it gives everybody the opportunity to come in here, what's going on, and then you can make our, and the, the last one.
I guess it would take people to get more informed.
Yeah, and it was, the last one was really, really brief, it was, um, the Blackfish Resort, and he had all his maps and all his permits that were filed.
I think that was the last one.
Or, or, it was Guy Gardens, it was the last one. It was, but. I think the next one was, let's see, Sharon.
That was a special review of Guy Gardens, it wasn't one of the regular building permits, Sharon was actually knowing that it happened for, uh.
So those, these things can come up anytime, okay, so keep it that high.
It was, it trended for whatever, right along with, right on the corner there is doing sort of old character plan lights, you know, town hall lights, eighteen seventies lights he's putting in. Yeah, he's, uh, putting the electric light.
Did he say he's putting in eighteen hundred and seventy?
I'm making that up, I'll just say, if, you have four electric doors right there.
That's about nominated, it's there.
Yes, I know, that must have cost a. I just get, no more?
That's it.
I think we're done, I think we're ready to adjourn, if anybody has something else, if they desperately want to.
We got an email just now, which is before it came in, from Mark Robson, from the county. This is pretty shocking, they have all of your seats.
So we've adjourned, is this after adjourned?
This is after, so.
After adjourned.
Chumming conversation.
Okay. Attack.
Please turn it off, yeah, this, yeah.
Well, now, now.
Now people are gonna be laughing. What?